This is July 1st, 2021, meeting of the Bowling Green City, Bowling Green, Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission. And Monica, could I ask if you could call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks? Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Monica.
Yes, sir.
Hamp, you want to... What's the right term?
I guess you're referring to my usual spiel in which I say, "Mr. Chairman, would you please order that the record include a copy of the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and all statutory regulatory provisions that govern tonight's hearing? Would you also order that the commission's entire file for each application be included in the record? And would you also direct that the qualification for each of the witnesses be a part of the record? And then finally, would you please administer the oath to each of those witnesses?"
Yes, sir. That'd be great. I'd like to have a copy of that for the next meeting.[131.69][131.69](Laughter) So if you'll do that for us, Hamp. Thank you all very much. We have our minutes from June the 17th. You've had a chance to review them. They were in your packet. Do we have a motion to approve?
A move.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
We don't have any old business tonight, I don't think. So we'll enter into our public hearing. Our first hearing is docket number 2021-39ZBG Chestnut Group Properties LLC has filed an application to rezone attractive land containing approximately .21 acres located 719 Chestnut Street from RM4 multifamily residential to central business with a general development plan. So Rachel, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Warren.
Before we begin this, I just want to remind everyone that this is our first meeting under our new joint agreement format. So these three items tonight will be just the four City of Bowling Green appointees and the four Warren County appointees, for a total of eight. Five is a quorum. We obviously have more than five tonight, so we do have a quorum. So this will be our first meeting in this format. And then our next meeting, of course, will be all 12. It will be our first full board back together. So just wanted to mention that before you begin.
Thank you, Dean.
All right. We had a pre-application meeting on April the 12th for the property at 719 Chestnut Street. The property is currently zoned RM4. The current use of the property is multifamily residential. And the future land use designation for the property is mixed-use residential. And the proposed central business zoning district is potentially compatible in this particular future land use category. Going to touch on a few things. Looking at page two, under the site characteristics review, under layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, this is the proposed layout for the site. The applicants are proposing to repurpose the existing residence for an office use. And they're also proposing to add some additional parking to the rear of the current building, as you see here on the site plan. The property does have access from both the alley to the rear and then also from Chestnut Street up front. Under cultural and historical features, we have noted that the existing structure was built in 1900, and that the property is located in the Chestnut Dodd Local Historic District. The property is also eligible to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Under site design and compatibility, touch on a couple of things here. We have also noted, similar to the request, that many of the existing residential structures have been repurposed for commercial use. Under signage, just noting that in the Chestnut Dodd Local Historic District, signage can be no taller than four feet in height and no wider than eight feet. Looking at the development plan conditions that were submitted, there are four. Number one deals with vehicular access to the site. Two prohibits specific uses. This may look a little short compared to what you might see with other applications, but in the Chestnut Dodd Local Historic District, there are also several other uses that are prohibited by ordinance. I have a list of those if anyone is curious. Number three deals with the general appearance of the existing structure, applicable building codes for commercial use, residential character, and restrictions for the Chestnut Dodd Historic District. And number four sets the hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Under the Focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated 13 items. We found five of those items to be in compliance. Eight of those items are up for your consideration this evening. The first, LU1.1.3, which looks at compatibility. Next, LU2, which looks at quality of development and character of the area. Next, LU252, which looks at compatibility of the proposed development with the Chestnut Dodd Local Historic District. And then NCR25 and 253, which touch on the vitality of the Chestnut Dodd Local Historic District and the impact of the proposed development on the existing historic structure. Next, HN1 and HN1.3, which address character and pattern of development and nearby neighborhoods. And last, ED1, which looks at diversification of the local economy. Again, the proposal this evening is to rezone the property to central business in order to repurpose the existing structure for an office use. The applicants actually own the property to what would be the bottom, and so this would allow for them to expand their existing office use and provide some additional office space just right next door. So again, they're proposing to add some parking to the rear. Any external changes to the site will require approval of a certificate of appropriateness through the Historic Preservation Board. And wrapping up with points to consider on page one, again, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map. The proposed development complies with the majority of the criteria evaluated in the review process, and compatibility should be determined by the planning commission. That is all I have for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Rachel? Okay. Mr. Pardue, are you representing the applicant?
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you please come to the microphone and
Thank you, Chairman.
State your name and address.
Ted Pardue, 1010 College Street. To the extent I need to, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Ted.
Not much more I can add or comment on beyond what Rachel just went through with you all in terms of the staff report and what you see in your written materials. Just add a comment or two. As she said, the Chestnut Group Properties folks own the property next door. So if you're looking at this property from Chestnut Street, they have 725 Chestnut, which is to the left, where they currently operate their insurance, real estate, and title business. If you all are inclined to recommend approval of this rezoning this evening, they are excited about the proposition of expanding that growing business into 719. If you've ever seen or been inside of 725, you'll see that they've done an excellent job of updating that property while at the same time preserving that sort of historical residential character, which is exactly what we hope to achieve through this process and through the development plan conditions that we've come up with for 719. I'll be happy to take any questions. Jim Maroni is here with me this evening on behalf of Chestnut Group Properties LLC, to the extent you have questions that I can't answer and that he might be able to.
Ted, is it your understanding that they're going to... Are they going to add to the property or just repurpose or remodel the existing property?
At this time, I think the majority of it is going to be repurposing, remodeling. There probably will need to be some additions to the exterior in order to make it compliant with building codes, but not any what I would call substantive additions in terms of more building space. ramps, porches, and things like that to bring it up to code.
Ted, any other questions for Mr. Pardue? Thank you, Ted. Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment, a question of Mr. Pardue or Mr. Maroni? Okay. Hearing none. Call for a motion.
I take a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number 2021-39ZBG. Based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, is demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved. Thank you all for your time.
Our second item today is 2021-40Z County Church. Lehman Avenue Church Christ has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 12.74 acres located the corner of Cumberland Trace Road and Carter Farm Road from ag to office, professional, commercial, with a general development plan. So Rachel?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference on April 12th for 2688 Cumberland Trace Road. The property is currently zoned agriculture with a request to rezone the property to OPC. The future land use designation is moderate density, so this may seem odd that we're considering a zone change request with a moderate-density future land use designation. However, in just a minute, when we get to the proposed uses for the property, we will see that they have limited the uses only to those that would have been allowed in a residential zone with a conditional use permit anyway. So the uses proposed, while the zoning may seem odd, would all be eligible to apply for a conditional use permit in a residential zone. So for that reason, a future land use map amendment was not required. Looking at the site characteristics review, touching on the proposed layout, you'll see that there's a proposed church to be located on the property with associated parking. The setbacks will adhere to the requirements of the zoning ordinance, including a 40-foot setback adjacent to any single-family residential property. Under the site design and compatibility review section, we have noted under building orientation that the applicants committed that the proposed structure would incorporate front-facing facades along both Cumberland Trace Road and Carter Farm Road. Under signage, staff has noted that very little freestanding signage exists in the vicinity. The zoning ordinance allows freestanding signs in the proposed OPC zone up to 20 feet tall with a maximum sign-face area of 100 square feet. Again, a future land use map amendment was not required for this proposal because churches are allowed in residential zones with a conditional use permit. For reference, properties with a properly permitted conditional use permit, in RM zoning districts are permitted one non-eliminated monument-style freestanding sign up to five feet in height with a maximum sign-face area of 60 square feet. Staff suggested that the applicants consider including a development plan condition to address proposed signage for the site. However, this topic was not addressed in the latest set of development plan conditions that were submitted to staff. Looking at section 314 from the zoning ordinance, that outlines our traffic impact study requirements. A traffic impact study was not required by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and it was not required by the Warren County Public Works Department, and leave over requirement that the primary entrance be aligned with the street across to the multifamily zone property across Carter Farm Road, which is what is depicted on the site plan, and the applicants also agreed to this requirement in the development plan conditions. Speaking of development plan conditions, there are 10. The first limits the use of the property to a church and church-related accessory uses, school, and a daycare facility. Again, these are all uses that would be permitted in all residential zones with a conditional use permit. Number two addresses vehicular access to the site. Three outlines proposed building materials. Four, maximum building height of 40 feet. Five, looks at lighting. Six includes considerations for sinkholes. Seven addresses preservation of existing vegetation. Eight looks at location of parking areas. Nine includes those restrictions on building orientation that I touched on earlier. And 10 sets a timeline for the current single-family residential use to cease because single-family uses are not allowed in OPC. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated 11 items and found seven of those items to be in compliance. There are four that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, the first being LU1.1.3. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area, including the location of parking and proposed signage. And then looking at the next page, we'll see LU2, which looks at quality of development and character of the area. And last, HN1 and HN1.3, which look at the character and pattern of development in the area and the impact of the proposed development on nearby neighborhoods. Wrapping up with points to consider on page one, again, the future land use map was not required to be amended due to the restriction on the proposed uses for the property. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. Third, the proposal complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design, with exceptions noted regarding signage. And last, compatibility should be determined by the planning commission. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Rachel? Okay. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Mr. Brooks, are you... Would you come to the microphone, please? State your name and address.
Evan Brooks, 1010 College Street.
Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
We don't really have much to add. We don't have anything to add, but just in listening to your report, Rachel, I think we should clarify something. So our DPC that talks about the entrance says it's going to be across from the multifamily, and I'm told that's not really right. What is shown on the exhibit is correct, but the road across the street is actually the entrance to the school and not to the multifamily. And so I thank Mr. McGahey for catching that for me. So we can say aligned with the street access to the school, or we can just say coordinated with the... I think we're all on the same page here, but we don't... It doesn't need to say what it says now.
I'm glad you pointed that out. I think the language was from the CDR committee meeting.
It was. It was.
And so at this point, it may be best to just say located on Carter Farm Road in a location to be approved by the Warren County Public Works Department, and then that way Josh can verify what was
Okay.
discussed maybe during the CDR meeting.
Yeah.
If it was really intended to be with the school entrance, or if it was
I think that it was.
intended to be further back with the multifamily entrance.
I think it was.
It was.
I think what we're showing graphically is exactly what everybody intends, but that's not what the lawyer said. So I might say, on the second condition, the first line ends as such primary entrance shall be, and then just strike all the way down to coordinated with the Warren County Public Works Department? It has, in fact, already been coordinated with the Warren County Public Works Department. So does that make...
Saying shall be on Carter Farm Road and to be coordinated with the Warren County Public Works Department?
Shall... Primary vehicular access to the property shall be from Carter Farm Road, and such primary interest shall be coordinated with the Warren County Public Works Department. That's what I'm suggesting. Okay? I think that's all we have.
Do you think we better ask one of the principals to agree to that DPC?
Sure. Sure. Let me see if there's anything else. I don't have anything else to...
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
For clarification. Number eight, location of parking areas, says will not be located any closer than 50 feet from a single-family residence. Was that intended to be from a structure or from a single-family property line?
That was intended to be from a property line, and the intent was that you not catch So I didn't... You did catch that, and then I didn't address it. So let me talk to my client about that, too. Okay?
Okay. Otherwise, it may not be needed.
Yeah.
It doesn't really carry any weight.
So the... I think there's only one house that this would apply to, and it's on the top of the exhibit here, right? And the church owns it and has no intention of doing anything other than use it or develop it, and does not care if there's parking within 50 feet of their property line. Does that make any sense?
Are you talking about this property to the north?
One that comes out on Cumberland Trace Road?
So I guess the question then, are the residential properties that back up that are in Carter Farms?
It would be fine about that.
If if the parking... If it was the intent of that development plan condition that parking not be located within 50 feet of those residential properties, or if it was truly only intended to apply to structures?
I can't tell you that I was bright enough to have intended either one. So... But now that I'm kind of more fully understanding it, I think we're okay on the ones that back up to Carter Farms.
On the eastern property line.
On the east side, to have that 50 foot from the property line.
Okay.
On the east side.
That will just make it easier for staff to determine site plan compliance later on.
Okay. I got you.
I just wanted to make sure there was no confusion
I got you. Okay.
on what that was intended to be.
So what have I just committed to? Let's see here. Parking areas on the... Is it east side? Okay. Southeast? Okay.
A single-family property line.
Any single-family residents on the southeast side of the property?
All right. And Mr. Barrett Hammer is the designated representative of the church. If you want to come up here and say the two things we've just agreed to are okay. Or you want somebody else? Okay.
Okay. Okay. Barrett Hammer, 745 Carter Sims Road.
Tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth. You're putting me under a lot of pressure here, so...
So we've just made two little tweaks to the development plan conditions, and on behalf of the church, Barrett, do you agree to those?
We agree to that, yes. That it?
That's it, man. That's all we have. Thanks.
Commissioners, any comments for Mr. Hammer or Mr. Brooks? Is there anyone in the audience that would have a question about this project?
Or opposition?
Or opposition, excuse me. Hearing no opposition or no additional comments, we call for a motion, please.
I take a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 2021-40Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passed. Best wishes to your church. Our next item tonight is 2021-41Z County Southside Development LLC and Mary Louise Smith Family Limited Partnership have filed an application to rezone a tract, tracts of land containing approximately 33.2835 acres located off Shell Drake Lane between McIntyre Street and Moorhead Road from agriculture to RS1D, single-family residential with a general development plan. So I believe Zach?
Thank you, Dean. We had a pre-app on May 5th for the property you see outlined in yellow, where the current zoning is ag, agriculture. The existing land use is also agriculture, surrounded by a lot of single-family and a few vacant tracts in the area. And the future land use map is moderate-density residential, which is deemed potentially compatible with what the applicants are requesting tonight, and that is that they're proposing to rezone roughly 33 acres at a portion of Zero McLellan Road from agriculture to RS1D in order to develop a maximum of 106 single-family residential lots. If approved, the development would be an additional, in parentheses, final section of the adjacent proposed McLellan Crossing subdivision with portions rezoned in 2018 and 2020, with the general development plan amended last year as well for the portion of the development rezoned in 2018. If you'll flip to your second page, we've got the site characteristics review. I can go over any of that if you like, but I will point out that there are a couple wetlands located on the property, and we're going to come back to that in a bit. We've got the attached density map here under the site design compatibility. densities of the existing subdivisions in the area range from .21 dwelling units per acre to 5.46 dwelling units per acre. And the approved density for the most recent phase of the development, which was rezoned in 2020, is 4.45 dwelling units per acre. And I can go over any of the other site design and compatibility things that you guys like, but we've got 10 development plan conditions. The first development plan condition deals with utilities being located underground. The second one has to do with the maximum of 106 dwelling units that I mentioned. The third condition is a bit of a mouthful, but it deals with exterior facades, garages, the prohibition of plain-faced block, square footage. So on the eastern cul-de-sac lots, they will be proposing a minimum of 1,600 square feet of heated living space exclusive of porches and garages, and all other lots shall have a minimum of 1,400. And at the end, about how that turns into restrictive covenants after they cease to be development plan conditions. Number four deals with lighting. Number five deals with streets and connectivity. Number six deals with the preservation of trees. Number seven deals with requiring membership into a homeowners' association. Number eight deals with sidewalks. Nine Number eight deals with sidewalks. Nine deals with fire hydrants being placed in accordance with the Woodburn Volunteer Fire Department. And number ten deals with sinkholes. Staff identified seventeen items under the focused twenty thirty category review, four of which comply, thirteen of which are up to your determination. And we can flip back to the front page and look at your points to consider. If the proposal is consistent with the flume and the moderate dens, uh, excuse me, yeah, moderate-density residential category, if the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with exceptions noted regarding wetlands, which I should have mentioned a moment ago, that the applicants did not address in their DPCs. The next point to consider, the proposed development complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requires of the zoning ordinance, and compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. That's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, questions for Zach? So Zach, do you know, how do these DPCs compare to the existing McClellan Farms? Are these just a duplicate, or are there significant changes here?
Believe they're pretty similar. I did not bring a copy of those DPCs with me tonight, but if you'll look in some of the site design and compatibility review, it kind of addresses some of those things. The minimum home size in the area varies between twelve hundred, fourteen hundred, and sixteen hundred square feet, and the applicants are proposing tonight fourteen hundred and sixteen hundred in different parts of the subdivision. The minimums for brick, stone, and ephes, I believe, are actually more. So the property will be constructed, as you can see, in development condition three of stone, brick, LP smart siding. If you go down to the materials review, I think in the previous phase, it was just eighty percent. So I don't know if that totally answers your question, but...
Zach, where are you seeing the eighty percent?
Uh, that's in the building materials review, down there, kind of in the middle on the second page, yeah.
Right, can I clarify one thing?
Yeah, go for it.
So the, that was for the first phase.
Right.
And then the latest application in twenty twenty, there is a permitted material of vinyl in the mix of all the other things that are permitted, with the requirement for a brick foundation. This application, the materials are very similar, also proposing to allow vinyl, but they have stated foundations would be brick or stone. So the pre, I think that's the main difference, is that stone has been introduced as a foundation material compared to the most previous phase.
As a foundation requirement.
Yeah.
Correct. All right, thank you. One more point clarification. So the remainder, or let's say the existing properties currently permit a hundred percent vinyl if, if they want, correct?
Ones for the last phase that was brought before you all in twenty twenty. So if you look at your zoning map, or maybe Zach, Zach can flip back to the zoning map if he doesn't mind. So the olive green, I guess to the left of the red area, that was the last phase that does permit the vinyl. The northern phase that's in the, I guess lighter green or more golden-green color to the north, that's where that, oh, yeah, I forgot we have pointers. Now we're in person. Thanks, Ben. Yeah, so this is where that eighty percent requirement comes in from the first, the first application. This is where vinyl is permissible with the brick foundation requirement.
One last question. Would you point to the one forty-two, forty, and forty-one lots? Because those apparently have a sixteen hundred?
Back one, there we go. Be these four lots right here.
Which back up to? Thank you. Any other questions for Zach, or Zach, do you want to address the wetlands, or you want us to ask the developer?
I think that would be a good question for the developer.
Okay, thank you very much. No other question. Mr. Brooks, are you representing the applicants? You've already been sworn in.
So once again, I don't have a whole lot to add to the staff report. I guess I'll just make a couple of comments. The lots that you just asked about, Mr. Graham, is really just trying to match the lots that they back up to. So that's why they were carved out with a little bit different treatment. We did the same thing kind of in the first section where we adjoin McClellan Farms. Otherwise, this is just sort of the final piece in the whole Smith Farm. We think that this one is different maybe than the others in that this is really kind of almost infill. We've got residential on three sides. We're, we comply with the flume, so we think we're sort of uber-compatible at this point on this one. And we, we think that this section really helps with the traffic diffusion in that there's three ways in and out of this one, and it connects to really three other subdivisions, if you will, another section of ours, and then, and then gray stone. So, and Mr. Warren, if you would like to hear about the, the wetlands?
Kevin, let me ask one thing, please.
Okay, sure, I'm sorry.
One of the things that I, I'd like to ask about, I would like to see some kind of minimum of non-vineal for this section. I would, I mean, you know, if the, if what I understand Rachel's saying is the ones that back up to their, you saying eighty percent, Rachel? Or Zach? And I understand it's an infill, and I understand there's a lot more of them, but, you know, personally, I would probably like to see seventy percent of it non-vineal.
Seventy percent of all the homes, or seventy percent of every facade, or?
I mean the...
Okay.
Aerials.
Okay.
That's, that's a number we use a lot in here.
I guess I will just, well, I'll talk to my client about it. I guess I'll just say that we didn't on the last section. We're, we're just adding on to it, matching exactly what we did last time, so... Go to the, yeah, so somebody help me. You got a pointer up here? Y'all can point. Yeah, okay. Okay, so...
In fact, what would be helpful is if you could point to the last section that, that, that had a hundred percent vinyl.
Right there.
And what year was that?
Last year. Yeah. So the first section was over here done a couple of years ago and revised once, and it has a little bit different standards, particularly in that end of it where it adjoins McClellan Farms. And then we've kind of done the same thing here. In that end of this one, we have a little bit different because we back up to that other section, and then this, the bulk of this section essentially matches what we did there.
So, Kristen, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I think my question is now, these lots that you've made larger square footage on, the sixteen hundred, do they back up to a subdivision that has a higher brick percentage? And so I think the question would be, for that group of lots, could you make a commitment of, say, seventy percent brick or stone for that, for that group of lots?
Same lots.
For those sixteen, yeah.
Yeah.
It's only four or five lots, right?
And I would be okay with that.
I understand, I understand the question, okay. I understand. Well, I've talked to them about it, but that...
I think on that, on that street, Kevin, isn't it eighty percent?
I think, is that right? I think that is right.
So would you, you be willing to match the eighty percent that, that touched those houses?
And what we were doing, what we were doing there was matching McClellan Farm. We're trying to sort of be compatible.
Understood.
Okay, all right. So let me, give me a, give me a moment.
Tim, what? Is there a difference, Tim, is there a difference in LP smart siding and just vinyl siding?
So that's LP's version of hard rock.
Okay. Okay. Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, right. So that's fine with us. I mean, we have, we have defined those lots as the eastern cul-de-sac lots or something like that, and so what we're agreeing to is on the eastern cul-de-sac lots, we would have eighty percent brick, stone, ephes, all those materials except vinyl.
Only those lots that are adjacent lots, one here, forty.
That's right. That's right.
I can have a lot on the cul-de-sac.
That's right.
Be all vinyl.
If it's not contiguous, that's right, because the cul-de-sac extends pretty far out. Yeah, that's right. And I do want, I do want to address the wetlands question, but I want to be sure we got it. Is that it, everybody? Okay, okay. Rodney, you're on. I call Rodney McGahey with Van Meter and Slavy, the engineer on this job, and he and I've had a lot of back and forth about what we can or can't do about the wetlands issue, and I'm just going to ask him to explain what we've got.
Rodney McGahey, twenty fifty-three Diford Road.
Or tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so there are three different areas that, that the staff's talking about on this piece of property that are listed as a wetland, and I want to read something for you here from the website that this information is, comes from. It says, let me see, if I can. The wetlands and deep-water habitats in this area were photo-interpreted using a one in fifty thousand scale from nineteen eighty. So basically, anything that was wet, whether it was a farm pond or, you know, low area that gathers water and it drains out, at the time that it was interpreted, is, is, is being called a wetland. On this property, like I mentioned, there are three areas. One, one of those is point four three acres, one is point two three acres, and one is point four nine acres. And you can, let me see if I can, is the arrows?
Arrows, yeah. The aerials, are you looking for the aerials?
Yeah, that one.
Is, is the point, you still have the point?
There is.
Yeah, there is a better aerial there somewhere.
Let's see if I can.
There you go.
Okay, so, let's see if I can get this thing to, so this is one of the areas right here, which is designated as a wetland, but really it's nothing more than a farm pond. The other area was kind of right in here, I believe, and there's nothing there. And then there's another area, if I'm not mistaken, which is like right here. So, and this comes up a lot in the, the semitels that we have in this area because we have, like I said, there, there's a, there are supposed wetlands, like in areas that encompass whole houses throughout this county, if you look at the, at this inventory. So it, it's, it's more or less, in my opinion, as an engineer, just a broad blanket system that says this is a wetland, just because it was wet at the time it was interpreted, whether it was a farm pond, it, it doesn't, it's, it's not a, when I think of a wetland, I think of a larger area that, that you have habitat that actually lives there, and, and it sustains their, it's like more or less an ecosystem. But, but this definitely does not meet that, in my opinion.
What y'all, what is, what is your plan with the farm pond?
They're planning to develop over it. I mean, we're just planning to drain it. I mean, there's nothing, yeah, there's, I mean, we're, we're just planning to, there's no sinkhole there, so it's not an issue. Normally, when you see the wetlands issue come up, it usually is in a low area, okay? And we incorporate that, incorporate that into the drainage design, so then it doesn't get developed and it, you know, can, can continue to provide habitat.
Your drainage isn't going dead?
No, sir.
Okay.
The, the drainage on this property is going to this triangular area here, which is already part of the design for the adjacent, the pre-approved section.
Thank you, Rodney. Any other questions for commissioners, for Mr. Brooks or Rodney? So just for my own edification here, help me understand this nineteen eighty photo that designates things as a wetland in Warren County.
Yeah. If I may...
Are we working from some sort of wetlands map when we, I see, okay. So let me just, let me maybe cut to the chase here. Can the staff verify that what he's just told us is accurate?
It, it sounds right. I've been on their website before, and sometimes it'll, you'll get on there and it'll actually say that the description is a freshwater pond, and you're like, oh, okay.
That's what all three of these say.
And, and so if that's the case, then it, essentially the comprehensive plan item is recommending that we're sensitive to our wetland areas. And so I think this body can determine whether or not the testimony that Rodney has just provided helps shed some light on these wetlands for this property and how applicable that item now is.
So Rodney, is it your testimony that you have either observed or you've walked this property?
Yes.
And, and that these areas that we're, that we're referring to do not fit the description of wetlands, and, and the one that does hold water appears to be a farm pond. Is that your testimony?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Rodney or Mr. Brooks? Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment or would like to share an opposition to this? We'll just do one at a time. Could, could I have your name and your address, please?
Cindy Young, fifteen thirty-four Morehead Road.
You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm late to the party because phase one adjoins our property. So my concern is density of housing and what it's going to do to, to the road. Morehead Road is hills and curves. We live on a flat, straight stretch. Our mailbox has been knocked down three times. So it looks like at the map, there are going to be two entry points on a very small stretch of Morehead Road, basically down the road from our driveway. So I'm concerned about that and what it's going to do to traffic. I mean, I don't know how many houses are up and down Morehead Road. I mean, I think in the three-mile stretch, maybe a hundred plus. Now we're going to put three hundred houses right here, and I'm just concerned about traffic flow. I have a seventeen-year-old, we have a seventeen-year-old son that travels that road, and I'm concerned, you know, about him going up and down through there. And another thing that doesn't have anything really to do with you all is a traffic light at the end of Morehead Road, where it intersects with Nashville Road. That, that is my, my biggest wish for, for our area. We've lived out there almost twenty years, and I know the only thing constant has changed. I had a college professor tell me that, and not adverse to, you know, growing and developing. I get that, but I'm, my concern is about the density of this and that, you know, that the new area looks nice. I mean, the lots are bigger, the houses are going to have bigger square footage. The part that adjoins us, I don't think it's getting the same treatment. And, you know, what's, what's going to be maybe starter homes now in ten years? I don't want it to be like a rental community that, you know, kind of maybe doesn't have the, provides us with the best neighbors. So those are my concerns, that. And then water, are, are land floods? I mean, there are days where we can't get up on a driveway. When we own adjacent property, we can drive out the backyard and, and get out on Morehead Road around the corner. But when they start building, is this going to, you know, if they build up these places to put houses, is that going to put more water onto us? So those are my, my main concerns. And, and two, a question, how many acres total are we talking, phase one and two, and how many houses total on phase one and two? And then I guess, you know, plans to improve traffic flow, and, you know, any chance to decrease density? You know, increase the light size, increase the house size, and then not have it so concentrated in that small of an area.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comment.
Just to answer one of your questions about the, about the water, I mean, they will have to give a site plan that they will have to contain their own water. So this, this will not be more water that you might have to deal with.
Because that, I mean, that's definitely a concern.
Yeah, I, I understand, but that is, that is one of the things that they will have to do and submit, and it'll be approved, but they have to contain their own water.
So main points, wishing for less density and better traffic control on that road because it is a major cut through between Russell Road and Nashville Road as it is. And I just, it's a nightmare thinking about that more, many more cars on that road, given that subdivision. And it looks like, just looking at the map, that Morehead Road's going to be a more convenient point for a lot of those people to come out than going all the way down to McClellan and coming out there at the light. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I can answer the question about the total number of lots between the phases.
Yes.
Let me, you got cut off on our pronounced, I think it goes back to this slide here.
here. So, in looking, oh.
You need a stream.
Yeah, exactly. So, the first phase is this kind of, I don't know what you call that, golden color. And so, that was for 42 lots on 16, roughly 16 and a half acres. And then, the phase that adjoins Morehead Road from 2020 contains 215 lots with a total acreage of 48.3. And then, the proposal tonight includes 30, roughly 33 acres with a proposal for 106 lots.
So, another question is, what is going to be the lot size for these houses that are in the purple area, which affects me directly, affects us right next to our house? So, what does that translate to? With 215 houses on 48 acres, what is the lot size? I mean, that can't be quartered large.
But their point, that would make it on the, on the 48 acres, they were .22 acres, and it was a density of 4.45.
.22 acres per lot?
Looks like yes.
Would be on average.
Average, on the average.
Yeah, the minimum lot size in that zone, RS1D, which is this dark green color, is 5,000 square feet.
Lot size.
Yes.
And I can't put my finger on it right now. What is our density here for this last? Point 33. Point 33?
3.18 is the proposed density for.
That's a lower.
It's less dense.
It's less dense.
It's less dense than the other ones already. It's less dense than what we had before.
It goes from 4, it goes from 4.45 to 3. whatever. Ma'am, would you state your name and your address, please?
Yes, I'm Stacy Hull at Ivy. I reside at 1046 Morehead Road. I concur with everything.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
I concur with everything Cindy said, as far as the area is concerned. As to the wetlands, you know, I live, I don't abut this development, but I'm very close. I can show you pictures of wild turkeys strutting in my yard. I saw our hen crossing the yard just the other day. I see hawks. I see all sorts of birds. We have rabbits. We have so much wildlife. So, I do have some concerns about that. I do also have concerns as to the flooding. I understand we're saying that's going to be addressed. But as to the building materials, I would like to see those match the nicer areas. Why are we going with less quality materials rather than better quality materials? This is in the South Warren School District. It's like Field of Dreams, build it and they will come. That's the impression I'm getting right now as far as our area is concerned. I do have also concerns about the traffic. You know, if the traffic is opened up to the adjoining neighborhoods, you know, in theory, folks from this newer development could go out the other ways to get out to Nashville Road. But I guess one of my fears is that, is it going to draw people from the other neighborhoods out through the newer one and out onto Morehead Road? Just last year, there was a collision at the intersection of Morehead Road and Nashville Road. Young man on a scooter, spray paint, out on the sidewalk with all the details. One of them said head to show where his head had hit the ground. You know, it is, it's a difficult place to pull out on Morehead Road there. There's a lot of brush to your right as you're trying to pull out. You've got a good line of sight to the left, but it's hard to see out to the right. My understanding is that a traffic study was done by the transportation cabinet, I heard, within maybe, I don't know, six months, and they said they were not going to put a light there. One thing I'm curious about is whether that traffic study included the numbers we're talking about with this new development. And if it didn't, do we need a new traffic study, which includes the numbers from the new proposal? Does anyone know? I'm tardy to the party here, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So, this was reviewed preliminarily before it even came before the commission this evening by our transportation agencies. And they did not require a traffic impact study. The previous phase, which would be the bottom area here, there was not a traffic study required with that, but there were requirements that a turn lane be installed at the intersection, but not a signal.
The intersection of?
Of Morehead and Nashville. There would be a dedicated turn lane installed there, but there's, there's not a signal that's been warranted at this time.
I encourage you guys to go onto Google Earth. I would assume Morehead Road, you can get on there and travel it. It is not a big, nice, wide road. It is woo, all over the place. And in fact, one of the entrances, I think, are proposed is riding a sharp curve to the left. So, those are my concerns. As to the trees, the trees, as far as I can tell, that are left right now are just the ones along what I would call the fence row. And some of the ones in the fence row have been left out. So, maybe I'm mistaken, but from driving by, it doesn't look like there are clusters of trees left out there. I will also say that sometimes development, it could end up killing those trees, getting too close to it. But, yeah, so, the traffic, the wetland issues, I'm not anti-development by any means, but I would like to see higher-quality homes in the area matching at least what we see in those adjoining neighborhoods.
Thank you, Ms. Ivy.
Thank you.
I have one more question. What is going to be the average value of these homes?
They'll be between probably two.
Barrett, you want to come up to?
Yeah, come up here.
First, this morning.
Okay. So, I think that the value, probably 14 to 1600 feet, they're going to be between 250 and 325, probably, give or take.
Is this in all phases of development, or just the?
Ma'am, we need you to come up to the microphone because it's being recorded.
Is this going to be all phases of the development, or just the latest one?
So, all I can speak about tonight, I guess, is what we're trying to rezone. So, incomparable to the other phases, it's, they're larger homes than what we have already. The only difference, I think, is just we're allowing some vinyl on some of those as opposed to the, to the all-brick or 80% brick.
Okay, so I'm more concerned about what touches me, which is the.
Okay, yeah, where are you located?
Um, I'm, where, do you have a pointer? Yeah, right there. No, come down, come down just a little bit. Yeah, well, closer to.
The.
Yes, right there. So, my question is, what is going to be the average value of the homes in that?
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, right there.
So, that's the part that we rezoned back in 2020 that we're currently moving dirt on.
Like, the meeting was virtual and?
The square footage, I think, minimum's 1,200, which you mentioned a while ago. I mean, the value on that's probably 235 to 280.
Okay. Where on that little, that little frontage of Morehead Road? What, do you know what that, how long that little stretch is that, where that fronts Morehead Road? How, what the distance is?
I do not. Rodney may be able to answer that, and I'm not sure.
And there are going to be two entrances on that little stretch of Morehead Road right there?
So, that Rodney would have to answer that question, too.
The reason we approved was two entrances, but we've gone down to one.
Gone down to one? Is it, do you know where it's going to be by any chance?
I do not based on that.
Okay, okay.
I'll be able to show you.
All right, all right, just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel, all, all of this traffic will come out to Morehead Road from the new, what we're zoning tonight?
So, what we're zoning, or considering for rezoning tonight, would connect here. There's a stub street, it's probably clear on.
Okay, okay, I got it now.
So, and then there's also, so there's an option, you could connect and then come back out.
Okay.
McClellan.
Okay.
Thanks, Zach, yeah.
There we go.
There's a stub right here.
All right, perfect.
And then, this would connect with everything else to the south that we were just looking at.
Perfect. Just one more clarification for Ms. Young, or actually for both of you. It's my understanding, and I want staff to correct me on this, that the connectivity issue isn't something that we have discretion on. We have to connect. And so, we have to let that traffic flow from both directions. And it's my understanding that not only does it become a mechanism for relieving traffic, high-density points, but also it becomes an issue with regard to safety vehicles, so that they can access from basically any direction. And then, so lastly, I think, Ms. Young, I do want to clarify that what we're zoning tonight.
It is not department.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I understand that.
All right.
This was just my opportunity to be in person and get more, this is more of a backfiling mission for me than, and just to kind of voice concern with the fact that you know, the department there, the city, and things like that. I realize the part that, that it bugs us is that shit will say, I get that.
That's all right. We appreciate you taking the time to come out and voice your concerns. Thank you. Any other comments or concerns from the audience? We've talked about traffic, the light on Morehead Road, the density, I think we've answered that. We've answered the water, and we've discussed the wildlife. Is there any other questions?
I do have one more thing to say. The, okay, the microphone, when I was coming home, of course, it's raining, but in a way.
It was so dusty, I couldn't, could barely see. It was like a dust ball. And I'm sure the people that live closer, I guarantee that dust would settle on everything they own. So, I didn't know if maybe there was a way to keep the dust down as they're, you know, building. So, that'd be the only thing.
Probably not, yeah. That's probably not something we would address. Yeah. Yeah. All right. Thank you all for your comments. We have the motion before us, and I would call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon a general development plan, document number 202141, Zieg County, based upon a testimony, doctors presenting this public hearing, a proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance, effective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing. Again.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you all for your comments tonight. Ben, do we have any discussion items for tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, we stand adjourned. Thank you for everybody being here tonight.